Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Chatham Select Board meeting of September 27, 2022. As the record show, the meeting started at 5:35 PM pursuant to Governor Baker's July 16, 2022 signing of an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, including the extension of his March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 20, until March 31, 2023. This joint, this meeting of the Chatham Select Board is being conducted via in-person and remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1508-945-4410, conference ID 203-386-491, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Channel 18, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. That's the regular announcement. First order of business is a roll call this evening. Mr. Metters.
Present.
Mr. Shell.
Present.
Mr. De Castro.
Present.
And Mr. Dykens is present. Shereen Davis will not be here this evening, but we have comments from her to report out on. Next to order of business, minutes, September 20, 2022.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Metters.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Shell, and I see Mr. De Castro's hand is raised. Mr. Castro.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not sure I'm going to offer an amendment. I do have a question for Shauna on this. Shauna, on Page 3 and on Page 6, there is a reference to an attachment, which is a written statement that was submitted, I assume, after the meeting by one of the speakers. We don't typically, unless it's a public hearing, we don't typically attach those to our minutes. So I was wondering why we would attach these as she was reading from, and she said so, but we have multiple people who come to that podium and read statements. We don't take those statements and put them as an attachment to our minutes.
We're required to attach any correspondence received for public hearings. We're not required to attach these. However, Ms. McAllen spoke very quickly that evening, and I was not able to capture even a part of what she said. So I asked her to please send them to me, knowing that she had written statements prepared.
Okay. I mean, I'm not going to offer an amendment, but I typically what we do is summarize what they've said. I just don't really want to establish a precedent going forward. So that's my extent of my comments, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Mr. Castro, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Shell.
Just two nits, one on Page 4, typo in the Select Board member Davis recused herself. And then pursuant to that, if you go over to Page 5, we have her voting. She did not vote.
Oh, good catch. Abstain, yep, recused. Good catch. Okay, motion, second edits. Mr. Metters, let's say you.
Aye.
Mr. Shell.
Aye.
Mr. De Castro.
Aye.
And the chair says aye as well. Next item of business are public announcements and agenda item requests. Public announcements out there in public land and/or online? I'm looking online, see no one. Agenda item request, Mr. De Castro.
Just to follow, thank you, Mr. Chairman, just to follow up again, this is to Shauna. So I see that next week, we're going to do the open meeting law review of executive session minutes. That'll be the beginning of our quarterly. Are we going to do an annual committee review at some point? We usually do that in September. Is that on the?
It hasn't been scheduled yet, but we can certainly add that in.
It's not my favorite top, agenda topic because it takes so long, but we had.
Do we do it in September? Or do we do it later?
We usually do it in September.
You do? That's okay.
We probably should do it at some point.
Well, we're going to get, we're going to get very busy with budgets here shortly and other items, so let's get it out of the way.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That's a good suggestion. Okay. Anything else for agenda item requests? Here and seeing none, none here and none online. We'll go on to the next order of business. We have a public hearing this, this evening, a change of manager. TPG Chatham Beverages LLC doing business as the Chatham Wayside Inn, Julian Kelly, excuse me, to Cletus E. Pancham. I hope I pronounced that correctly, and we'll have our clerk read the public hearing announcement.
Notice is hereby given that the Chatham Select Board will hear, hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September 27, 2022, at 5:30 PM in the large meeting room at the Town Office Annex 261 George Ryder Road, Chatham, and remotely via Microsoft Teams platform to consider a request for a change of manager to the annual all-alcoholic beverages hotel license for TPG Chatham Beverage LLC doing business as Chatham Wayside Inn from Julian Kelly to Cletus E. Pancham. All interested parties are encouraged to participate.
Thank you, Mr. Shell. Do we have Julian here this evening?
Actually, I'm remote. This is attorney Trish Barnesworth.
Hello, Trish.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the board. I represent the licensee, and there present with you should be the proposed new manager, Cletus Pancham, because I'm up in Boston, so I just, it was easier for me to participate remotely. He should be there.
Just go to the mic, go to the mic, please, and press, press the button so that it turns green, Cletus.
Yes.
Please.
It is, it is green now.
Okay, good. Well, welcome.
Thank you very much. It's a privilege and an honor to be here today.
You must be excited.
I am excited, thank you.
Great. Okay, any, any issues with the, the transfer of the license by the Select Board? Any questions? Mr. De Castro, any questions?
Thank you. Just how long have you been with the current owner?
With the current owner, I've been with TPG about six months now.
And what, what have you been doing there thus far?
I'm the area general manager responsible for Chatham Wayside Inn and also for the Chatham Highlander Inn.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anything else? I have no issue with respect to the application whatsoever. Entertain a motion?
Go ahead.
Second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Metters.
Aye.
Mr. Shell.
Aye.
I'm sorry, yeah, okay. Anybody from the public, I always mess that up, by the way. Anybody from the public like to speak to this issue, the transfer of the license here and seeing no one either here in, in person and/or online? We'll go back to the, go back to the board. Mr. Metters.
Aye.
Mr. Shell.
Aye.
Mr. De Castro.
Aye.
And the chair says aye as well. Congratulations, Cletus. Thank you, Trish, for, for being online this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Good luck down there.
Thank you, thank you, board members.
Have fun, good luck. Okay. Next item of business is our, our item that we have every single week, given the water situation, any amendments to water conservation restrictions, any changes considering amendments to the water conservation restrictions if needed. Anybody have any issues with respect to water this evening here on the board? Any items with respect to water from the public this evening? We have Mr. Temple's hand is up, and I would love to hear from you, Tom. We would love to hear from you. Mr. Temple.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and board members. There's something that slipped my attention. I know when we went from hand watering to, you know, we shut off all our irrigation systems, but we went to hand watering. We're allowed to hand water, you know, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. We then cut it back with the restrictions to one day a week, but using the gators for the new trees. The only trees for watering are the brand-new trees. I wasn't at the last meeting, and I believe you changed the regulations to include a few more items that, let's see what they are here, but under exemptions. What I'm looking for is, because we use the gator watering bags, which hold typically two to three gallons of water, they're not always empty when we go to fill them. We're filling one day a week. However, because it falls in an area where our, our guys don't, you know, they're not at work, and we'd have to pay them overtime, and we have contractual obligation to pay them three-hour minimums if they're called in beyond that timeframe. So I'd like to see if we can add an item D to the, the item under three, under, you know, water restrictions to include the hand watering into our gator bags to take care of the 35 trees that we planted in various locations. We did quite a few trees at the cemetery, the annex, as well as off of the wastewater treatment control roadway and the annex. So I, I would like to be able to continue watering those once a week if possible, and I'd like to try to get an amendment to that if I can.
I think that's fine. I, I mean, I think either Monday, Wednesday, or Friday, you could, you could do it anyway, but I, I would think. I don't, I'm not sure we need an amendment, but, Mr. Shell.
I think in the, in the requirements, I think it was calling for handheld watering to be between midnight and 8:00.
Oh.
And between 5:00 PM and 9:00 PM.
Gotcha.
I don't, I don't really have anybody in at that time, so I'm looking to be able to water.
Now, now I understand, Tom. Now I understand. Yes, I, I know, no issue whatsoever here. Any issues with there any more, any of the Select Board members?
I, I would move that amendment if there's no other comment on the board.
Done.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, vote. Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Mr. Shell?
Aye.
Mr. De Castro?
Mr. Chairman, this is going to be inserted under, under the exceptions.
Yes.
Tom?
Tom?
He's frozen.
Yes, that's correct, under the exceptions.
Okay. All right. And the chair says aye as well. Thank you, Tom, for bringing that up. Appreciate it. Okay, any other issues with respect to water? We're doing okay. It actually rained. The lawns are actually tinged with some green around the edges. Okay. On to public comments on business agenda this evening. We have, we have a one-day alcohol permit from Bama Tunt that's been withdrawn. We're going to hear it in a future time. One-day entertainment permit, Mom and Pop's Burgers, a presentation or an introduction and presentation to Grow Smart Cape Cod, and a discussion about the Crowell Road, Route 28, Main Street Intersection Improvement Project, where public comments will be accepted. So there's no need to comment yet because there's a lot more information forthcoming. Then we have committee appointments, cultural council, open space committee, and then our town manager report. So any comments from the public on any of those agenda items at present? I see one hand up out in virtual land. That is Frank Messina. Mr. Messina.
Hi, I'm sorry, can you hear me, sir?
Yes, we can. Thanks, Frank. Yep.
Yeah, I apologize for usurping your agenda from a sec, point of view of your, the Crowell Road intersection, won't be able to continue on the meeting. I just want to say I reviewed the package in, in pretty detail, and I was quite impressed with the changes, and I hope the selectmen, you know, also in their review with the DOT. But the only comment I had relative is the fact that, you know, we just are in the process of putting a signal for crosswalks over in South Chatham, and we appreciate that. And there's already been a little bit of pushback. Well, why are we doing this? You know, it's, you know, Chatham is not 1930s anymore, and I just had the recent experience of stopping at a red light, an orange light, which was turning red at that intersection, Crowell Road going eastward, and a car passed me on the right going about maybe 50 miles an hour. So you might want to think about it sometime in the future, cameras, because that is a very dangerous intersection. And anyway, good luck this afternoon with your, your review. And as I said, it looks pretty good from my perspective. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Frank. Thank you, Mr. Messina. Any other comments for folks that can't attend the, the rest of the meeting? I see no hands up either here or there virtually. Okay. The next item is a special one-day entertainment permit, Mom and Pop's Burgers, October 8, 2022, from 11:30 AM to 6:00 PM. I believe we have a spokesperson from Mom and Pop's here this evening. Welcome.
Hi, thank you for having me here. So we are planning on having our Oktoberfest on Saturday, October 8. And one of the things we're planning on having is outside entertainment on our patio, and we've been fortunate enough to have one of the local elementary school music teachers perform accordion for us. So we were planning on having him outside during those hours as part of festivities for that day.
Okay. So you're Lindsay?
Yes, sorry.
Okay, hi, Lindsay, welcome, Lindsay. Lindsay Fitzgerald. Okay, any comments or questions from the Select Board? Mr. De Castro.
Just a question, your rain date would still be October 9, same hours?
Correct, yes.
All right, so we should include that in the motion, I think, if we're going to go forward with this. And we haven't heard anything from any neighbors, any, any concerns expressed, so.
I've heard nothing. Shauna, you haven't heard anything?
Thank you.
All right, perfect, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Shell.
I would move to grant a. I would move to grant a one-day entertainment permit to Lindsay Fitzgerald as a representative of Mom and Pop's Burgers, 1603 Main Street, on Saturday, October 8, 2022, from 11:30 AM to 6:00 PM with a rain date on Sunday, October 9, 2022, same hours.
Mr. Metters.
Aye.
Mr. Shell.
Aye.
Mr. De Castro.
Aye.
And the chair says aye as well. Have fun, Lindsay, good luck. Take, take care. Next item on our business agenda is Grow Smart Cape Cod. I believe Alyssa Magnata and Andrew Gottlieb are here from, to present the notion of Grow Smart Cape Cod. Alyssa's with the Housing Assistance Corporation, and Andrew is with the Association to Preserve Cape Cod, and you certainly are welcome this evening here in Chatham.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Nice to be here.
Thank you.
See you.
Good to have you.
Do you have our presentation?
We do. We, we have a handout.
Okay, great. So we're here as a part of our tour of all 15 boards of selectmen. This is actually the first that we've been able to do in person. And not sure too many people are accustomed to seeing us, us two here together, because generally, speaking, people tend to see the environmental community and the housing development community as at odds with one another. And what we're here to talk to you about a little bit today with this presentation is a project we did together, Grow Smart Cape Cod, where it reflects a realization that in many respects, we share a common interest. Our common interest is in promoting investment, municipal investment in wastewater infrastructure for two primary reasons. Well, three, actually. One is that you can't get density in housing sufficient to deal with the affordability problem without a means of dealing with the wastewater at a higher level of treatment than you can get from any septic system. Or frankly, any, somewhat less so, but packaged treatment facilities also are an improvement, but they don't reduce to the level that a municipal facility would. Secondly, and you know it as well as anybody, given what Town Chatham has invested in a long-term wastewater management program, in order to achieve improved water quality and restoring resources, and ultimately in the future in our ponds, we're going to have to have collection and treatment to manage nitrogen in critical areas. The third reason that we're here together is that the protection of remaining unbroken habitat is an important feature for the remaining 13% of the landscape that isn't developed across Cape Cod. Having a focus of development in the areas that are best suited to development as a means of taking pressure off the unbroken remaining habitat is an important feature for the environmental community. So the project you have in front of you, I won't run through the slides the way you have them, because I don't remember them that, that well, and I didn't bring a copy.
Usually we have the slides.
Usually we have it up, so I'm winging it a little bit here.
I have, I have the notes.
The purpose behind this, up, here comes our savior. Purpose behind this project is to, thank you, identify those areas where there's overlap between protection of remaining habitat, redevelopment or development of, of housing in areas where it's well-suited, and the investment in the infrastructure. And what we're trying to do with this project is provide a tool to improve and enhance conversations you're having in Chatham and that every one of the other 14 towns across the Cape are having in their communities, not to provide a direct, a directive about where you ought to do what and how you ought to think about it, but to give you this lens to look through to enhance your local planning discussions so that you're making the most informed decisions possible. And as such, let me just really quickly walk through how we came up with this mapping product. And the intention here, for those people watching at home, you can go to Grow Smart.
Cape Cod.
CapeCod.org, and there's a big map of the Cape. You zoom in to your area, you can put in your address, see where you pop up. And we're a whole bunch of different layers of analysis and information that you can click on and off and see how the presence or absence of environmental resources, presence or absence of sewer-ing plans, the presence or absence of housing criteria that are developed by HAC influence where priority development, where priority protection might take place. So you can understand what the factors are, the drive where we came in. Again, do with them what you want, but we think it's a useful exercise to go through. So first, we formed a little advisory committee with people with expertise in housing, water resources, planning, municipal finance, just to get some guidance on how we ought to approach this. We looked at the natural resource layers first, in part because they're objective and they're easy. We didn't create new data layers for this project. We used information that's existent in the Mass GIS system, in particular around well-hit protection areas, natural landscapes, protected open space, FEMA flood zones, vernal pools with a buffer, and wetlands with a buffer. The most important resource areas of concern from our perspective as an environmental organization, those created the base layers and started the conversation about where you layer on housing. The housing criteria were a little bit more iterative in that the emphasis on factors that we thought were important ultimately around wastewater, around housing criteria were the existence or planned within the next 10 years of wastewater infrastructure. So we recognize that a number of communities are at very different places, and they're planning a discussion phase and implementation. You're ahead of most because you actually have an existing sewer system and you're adding to it. 11 of the 15 towns on the Cape are starting from zero and are at different places on that continuum. So the existence of wastewater infrastructure, known or planned, probably the most important determinant of where priority housing pops up in this map. Your existing activity and development patterns. Simpler way of saying that is, what are the already disturbed, already developed areas that you might want to redevelop or which there are other services and other activities around them that make inclusion of some diversity of housing an attractive feature where it can be integrated into an existing activity areas? And then potential for future development. You know, are these areas that lend themselves through roadway access, absence of buffer zones for critical environmental resources and the like to future development? They were put in a scoring system, and the housing criteria manifest themselves on the map in these big 35-acre hexagons. This project is not, even though you can look up your address, it wasn't intended to be a property scale exercise. It was more these broader areas, so you can look within the broader areas and get a sense of where they fall. The criteria ended up with three colors for housing, the lighter purple color, just sort of medium priority, the dark purple, which would be the highest priority areas, and then the salmony color, which doesn't have very much applicability in Chatham because your sewer plan calls for almost, if not all the community, almost all the community ultimately to be sewed. There are a lot of communities where it was useful to show if you planned on sewer-ing here, or if you were to tweak your sewer-ing plan in the following way, a certain area would pop up, because otherwise, absent the wastewater infrastructure, it shows up as a really good area to encourage density of housing. So it was a way to put something in this analysis that gave people some guidance on where to think about turning some knobs if they wanted to do a little bit more on the housing side. All those areas going to keep you out of the uncontiguous green spaces, by the way. We took the maps, we ran them through our criteria, produced them. We met with most, but not all, of the town planner, planning board, housing advocates, environmental stewards within each community to get some feedback, to ground-truth it at two levels. One is, did we have all your particular situations in town coded right? You know, sometimes something shows up on a map as being a certain type of open space, it's a golf course, or, you know, it's protected in a way that, that doesn't show up in the mapping. But also, do the recommendations in that initial map make sense to the local community? We were able to take that information back, and it resulted in significant refinement in the draft stage of the housing criteria in particular. And we went back and forth based on the feedback we got in most towns and tried to tweak it in a way that minimized the anomalous things where you go to a town, somebody who knew what was going on in your town would look at it and go, what are you doing that for there? That doesn't make any sense. Somebody will find one of those in one of the 15 maps, but by and large, we feel like we cleaned those things up. And then there are a series of recommendations in the report. So you got the map as a product. We haven't been showing the town-specific maps as part of these presentations, because people tend to focus in on, you know, where's my house? Where's my neighborhood? What are you thinking about? Why there? And then you lose the conversation. I would encourage you to go play with the map. But the recommendations are, in general, for towns to prioritize their spending and leverage their available resources in places that are beneficial for housing, wastewater infrastructure, and natural resource protection. What we're trying to do politically is give the housing advocates and the environmental advocates a reason to go support municipal wastewater plans, because they serve both of our agendas, as opposed to arguing over where something's going to go, where something's not going to go, and sort of lose the forest for the trees, if you pardon the expression, and not support the main infrastructure development that needs to happen. And there's been variability in terms of town to town, how aggressive towns have been about setting aside discretionary resources, hotel motel tax receipts and the like for wastewater infrastructure. We're suggesting that you direct your investments in local planning initiatives in two areas, towards the areas that are identified for priority for protection and towards the areas that are identified for priority in housing, if you have a choice, where to make an investment, either one of those areas. It's a recommendation of this report that you focus it in the priority areas, because at least from the perspective that we bring to bear, those are the areas that make the most sense. Similarly, we'd suggest that the focus around acquisition, acquisition of property for open space, acquisition of property for housing, focus on the priority areas in each one. We say that, recognizing that there are going to be individual actors, especially people in the private markets, who look at a piece of land in a priority habitat area and say, I really want to build something there. And there are really, there are also people in the conservation world who will look in an area that's priority for housing and say, I think a portion of this would really make a good place for a pocket park or a public recreational facility. We know those things are going to happen, and this is not meant to prevent those from happening, but really to inform the public agency discussion about how to think about prioritizing. agency discussion about how to think about prioritizing your investments there and to tweak your regulatory requirements. People take signals from your regulatory world about where to do what. So, you know, you adopt zoning that encourages, through a variety of means, whether it's by right, minimizing requirements, providing density bonuses and the like, to direct people to a specific area for housing development because that's where you see it working in tandem with your wastewater infrastructure. People read the tea leaves, they follow the money. Pathway is easier, I can get something done more quickly, less hassle, less time, less expense as a result, they're going to go there. Similarly, if you want to set up barriers to try and discourage development in priority habitat areas, we all know how to do that too. On that theme, target your housing production into those areas where housing is identified to same and natural resources, do the rezoning to protect the priority natural areas, to reduce development and reduce associated sprawl. And more than anything, continue along, and you're doing it, with your wastewater infrastructure investment because we're not going to get anywhere, housing, habitat protection, resource protection, water quality improvement, without the associated wastewater infrastructure. The maps are available on the website. I just want to again emphasize, they're a discussion and planning tool, they're not a dictate, and they're not an individual property thing where we say it is all exclusive to one use or another. And the maps don't cover every potential outcome. As I said, we know there are people who have plans, and these plans sometimes comport with these recommendations, sometimes they don't. But we're hopeful that you and your residents in town will find this product as something that's useful and help inform discussions that I know you're having, that we know you're having, and that we would support and offer our respective staffs to the extent you would find them useful to help you dig into these maps more, help your staff dig into these maps more, the extent it's useful to have any participation on our part in any of your public meetings or hearings, we're happy to do that. With that, I don't know if Felicity has anything else to add?
Just to add, I, I, he does such a great job explaining the entire, you know, project and walking us through it.
She lets me make mistakes and she comes in and cleans it up at the end.
And then I've got the notes up here of like.
We've done this plenty.
Yeah, just to add a finer point to the, to the housing piece, the purple areas in the map are where we believe that a density allowance could be considered so that we can build more affordable and attainable housing for our locals. So it's, it was a little bit different looking at Chatham because we really could have had your whole town purple because of your sewer plan. So we really had to focus on the areas, like Andrew said, that we wanted for redevelopment, areas where there's already buildings, already development happening, that we could have potentially more density in to allow more housing, and that that's smaller units, more affordable units, and focus on the areas with schools and, and the municipal area and stuff. So when you look at Chatham, we did have to make some considerations to your town after the feedback that we got to make sure that the priority areas were able to be called out for purple. Otherwise, we would have said, "Build everywhere," right? And we know that's not the reality for your town and the reality for what the region even needs or would be able to support. So we really had to focus in. And I think that that really lends itself to this idea of our two sides, if you will, collaborating and where we wanted to work together to make it a win for the environmental side and a win for the housing side and give people, give the public and towns areas where they can focus their resources and focus their advocacy efforts, like on buying land is another, another area that people could come together on. Rather than fighting against a parcel of land that's in the housing area, why not come together to buy it and support it for housing so that then you can use your funds to conserve in areas that we know have environmental value? I also want to remind that we were, we were funded by the license plate dollars, right? The Barnstable County Economic Development Council license plate money. So this project was funded by them and our staff spent a lot of time and resources that the commission lent to us, which was very generous of them and really helped us expedite our, our learning and our mapping. And we have an info session on October 13th that's open to everybody free where our teams get together and walk through the maps in quite a bit of detail for those who want to hear firsthand how the criteria was established and how the GIS data was gathered and how the maps were created. So that, those are my updates.
With that, happy to answer any questions or?
Well, number one, super. Number two, it's incredibly topical and timely, especially for Chatham, never mind the entire Cape, but in particular, Chatham. We, we, we have addressed these issues and are addressing these issues, you know, every, almost every day, every meeting. Affordable housing is arguably our number one priority, water is arguably our number one priority, finding available land to build, affordable and/or attainable housing is arguably our another number one priority. I mean, this is, this is spot on, and the, the notion of, of, you know, we lived the Middle Road discussion, which was environmental folks against the housing folks against.
Exactly.
And we had a town meeting vote with respect there too, and, you know, it, it's, it's not a win-win, it's a lose-lose.
It is.
So, so the lens of a win-win is a really good one, and, and I think it's very interesting that you bring that lens forward, and I think it's a smart, it's a smart equation, if you will, or a smart lens to look through. I will log on to the, along to the map, you know, from a, from a global perspective, and this is a joke by the way, it looks most of the purple in Chatham is right along Shore Road. That was a joke, but anyway, really neat perspective and I'm glad to see our license plate money is being put to good work, or good use, I should say. And those are my overarching comments, but very, very on point, and I'm sure we have select board comments as well, so. Mr. Nick Castro will start there and we'll work back.
Thank you, Ms. Trum. Thank you very much for the presentation, nice to see you, Randy.
Good to see you.
Former selectman, select member, board member, chairman from the town of Mashpee.
I'm a recovering select.
I was going to ask you if you'd rather, want to go back on?
There's life on the other side. Join me.
He was trying to convince me to do it, so now I'm like, okay.
Good, good to know. Thank you, thank you for doing this. I remember when, reading the announcement of this in the Cape Cod Times a few months ago, so it's nice to see it live. And Jeff mentioned the tension we've already recently experienced on a particular parcel at our town meeting. Can I, I was just going to ask you, you mentioned you have an advisory committee, I was curious as to who, do you know, can you tell us some of the people that are on it?
It's been a while since the group met, they helped us at our formative stage, so, you know, I, we can get you that information.
They're on the website, I, I can't remember.
Off top ahead, no.
That's all right, I can look on that.
It was a good balance, we both, whoops, we both picked people to be on the committee, it was a good balance of people and, and, you know, broad-based perspective.
Well, I, I think it's a great initiative and I think it can be very helpful to us here in Chatham as well as to the other towns. Since I have the representative from HAC here, I wanted to ask you a question. How do you define attainable housing?
How we define it is housing that the wages, the year-round wages here can afford. So it's not necessarily capital A affordable, but it could be something that someone that's making $100,000 or $120,000 can afford on the Cape, but as you know, that inventory doesn't exist right now.
Yeah, okay.
So basically, it's housing that's available, right? Attainable is just mean that, that it's there and they can afford it at the wages that they make.
Yeah, because we've had a lot of conversation back and forth about the actual dollar amount, and then people see, you know, 100,000 or 200,000, depending on if you have a one or two family, a two-person household, and, and argue, "Well, we shouldn't be doing anything for those folks, they don't really need the help."
Yeah, but we, well, we do need the help, you know, we don't, we don't have the inventory at any level, even at the highest, you know, the highest end. So it's really looking at making sure that we're, we have the capital A, deed-restricted affordable for people who are lower income. And that, that can be restaurant workers and CNAs, you know, the, these are still people who participate in our society and still work, but they make 30,000 or 40,000 a year. That's just, that's about $750 a month that they can afford in rent, right? And we're seeing two bedrooms going for 2,000 to 2,500, big, big difference there.
Well, thank, thank you both for coming, I appreciate it. Thank you, Ms. Trum.
Bet. Michelle.
Yeah, I, I just, first of all, thank you very much. This is extremely informative and I would certainly hope that it will be a tool that we can use to, to move our process forward. I'm, I'm pleased to hear that, that we're number one in your presentations around the Cape, that we've, we've done something first, which is a good thing. And I, I want to note that Alyssa was here yesterday and made a presentation with a couple of her colleagues on the subject generally of affordable housing, about housing that people can afford. And, and the, I, as I interpreted the last maybe 20 minutes of that conversation apropos your comments about environmental and housing needs working together, there was a certain interest and, and focus in the room, and this was a group of private citizens in Chatham who were interested in being helpful in, in developing Chatham's affordable housing efforts. But how do we perhaps marry moving ahead and, and getting ahead of environmental concerns at the same time that we do, that we do affordable housing? One of the big issues, apart from the political issue, is, is cost and, and how do you figure out ways to finance or subsidize or both that cost? And I, I was quite pleased to see that from a number of different perspectives in the room, there really did seem to be people who were excited by that, that possibility, so.
Yeah, it's not necessarily part of this project, but, you know, on that issue of affordability, you know, obviously, you know, there have been a number, I went up, talking about affordability, about wastewater infrastructure, you know, a lot of tools that have been given to municipalities by the legislature between the zero-interest loan program and 25% principal forgiveness through the Cape and Islands Trust that Chatham's probably gotten more from than any other town in the Cape thus far, I think, or darn close to it. The county commissioners, you know, Mr. Bergstrom was particularly helpful with this, recently adopted and then had approved by the state changes to the Barnstable County Community Septic Loan Program.
Oh, good.
That provides or decrease the interest rates on loans. The homeowner, either for a private septic upgrade or connection to sewer, is pretty much on the hook for the whole nut. The septic program that the county ran prior to these changes charged a 5% interest rate, still a good deal because it was a no credit, no background check, no credit check assignment of, you know, basically a betterment for, cover your septic. The program's been revised to emphasize sewer connections as eligible activity, and depending on your income level, if you are at between, up to 120% of area median income, which is about $95,000, you qualify for a 0% loan. And if you, between 120 and 180%, so up into the mid 140s to around 150, you can get a 2% loan. Loans for people above 80, 180% AMI are 4%. So there's a real benefit to modest, not even low, but, you know, really, you know, people that have pretty good income that still, because of the cost of living on the Cape, struggle. This new program is going to provide a really valuable tool for people who are at 180% or less to get assistance with their sewer connection costs, have the ability to spread it out over 20-year betterment over the life of the, life of the loan. So it's a real big enhancement. So, you know, you speak to the question of affordability, people are concerned about, you're still seeing new tools come forward. And the last thing we're working on, and both Representative Pekin and Senator Seer have been very helpful with this, is the governor proposed additional money in a supplemental budget, $200 million to the Cape through the Cape and Islands Water Protection Trust to further supplement or capitalize the water infrastructure trust fund or the Cape and Islands Trust Fund to be able to continue to provide that 25% principal forgiveness and loan forgiveness for people who are getting those septic loans. So if the governor's language goes through, or something close to it, the vision is that for those 120% and below AMI loans, half the principal cost would be forgiven for the people 120 to 180, 25%. Again, really valuable tool to help people who are in most need of financial assistance so that they don't look at their own personal cost of connection and have concerns about voting to, for the next sewer extension project because it's going to hit them kind of hard. So we're, we're hopeful that even though there was some hiccups at the end of the session, formal session in July, session doesn't really end until the second or third of January, something's going to pass, and we're all working really hard to make sure that this piece gets included in it to be the final piece of financial assistance available to Cape residents.
Yeah, that would be a, a, a big positive development, so, and thanks for giving us that, so.
Yeah, and both Sarah and Julie have been great about it, so, you know, we've been talking extensively to the governor's office about keeping that alive and hopefully get that priority on the shortlist of whatever passes, because they're going to do something this year. They have to. So this needs to be in it.
Right, thank you.
Yeah, that sounds great. Corey?
Well, first, thank you very much for the presentation, it's always nice to see, like, you know, opposing views kind of coming together to work collectively for the greater good. Just one question, if I can ask this, ask this clearly. So obviously, development, or actually, redevelopment is the preferred path, kind of areas that have already been disturbed and viewed for one thing, focus on that. Ideally, avoid areas that are, have been undisturbed, keep those for conservation. How does the concept of taking an area that was developed and transitioning it more to conservation and taking it out of that equation, is that following in line to where your, your program is, or would you say, consider we, us, considering a community, considering, you know, undeveloping an area?
If it were in the green area.
Do they prioritize maybe reusing it, or how, how does that get played out?
I mean, if you're talking about rewilding an area, basically?
Yes, yes.
You know, if it's contiguous to existing habitat, protected open space, provides a corridor, those are areas where, we haven't spent a lot of time talking about, we don't see a lot of those proposals, but they would make the most sense where you're connecting or expanding on existing areas that are already protected or provide some other form of drinking water protection or something like that. Absent their presence in an area of priority habitat, if it fell within an area of dark or purple, would probably suggest that redeveloping that area probably makes a little bit more sense.
All right, great.
Yeah, or if you look at the map, you know, across Cape Cod, there are green areas that are already developed, right? I mean, we had to take what's already, what's existing. So, yeah, that would be an example of if, if there was development in a green area to start to think about that area differently. For whatever reason, we have read the data that there is priority habitat there, and so it needs to be protected in some way.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. You know, density is a four-letter word in our, in our world of single-family homes and we run up against it a lot. And we are advantaged here in Chatham that we do have our wastewater, our wastewater system that will allow us to perhaps, perhaps have more dense structures, if you will, more dense housing, but more to come there. We, we've yet to, we've yet to kind of really broach the subject or really get underneath the covers with respect to density, but it is a way to get housing.
And I think, you know, we generally, you know, I don't want to put words in Alyssa's mouth, and the way I say this sometimes turns some people off, but if we're gonna, but I'll do it anyway. If we develop the last 13%, the way we developed what's preceded it, we know what we're going to get. We're going to get lousy water quality, traffic, fragmented habitat, and, you know, uniform but unaffordable housing. Why?
Right.
Why do it? Why do what we've been doing? We saw what it got us.
And, and density allows to reduce traffic, it's better for the environment, it's better for water, it's better, it's the way people want. Your village center is like the coveted place on Cape Cod, right? And your zoning today wouldn't allow it. So it's that kind of density that we're talking about, that it's walkable, livable, approachable, and people want to visit it and, and spend time in it.
Yeah, in many ways, we've zoned it, you know, we've zoned ourselves out of it, so it's our own, you know, it's our own problem to live with, but we've got to fix it too. Anyway, we won't wax on, but thank you very much for the interview.
Thank you for your time and attention.
Really do appreciate it, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I guess I am afraid of that.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is our discussion on Crowell Road, Route 28 Main Street intersection project, a status update, finalize the project alternative for a Mass dot 25% design hearing submission.
Finalized the project alternative for a Mast dot 25% design hearing submission. I believe we have with us this evening, Mr. Terry Whalen and Mr. Temple as well. And I believe, Terry, you're going to take the lead here. Welcome, Terry. I see you. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, so I'm just going to share my screen here and do a overview presentation here. Just give me one second. Okay, so hopefully that is projected on the screen right now. So again, my name is Terry Whalen. I'm the Principal Projects and Operations Administrator for the Town of Chatham. In the package for this evening's meeting is a staff report that I'll be providing an overview of for the board and public as an update on the Crow Road Intersection Project. So for background for the next two slides, which are going to highlight the project's chronology going back to September 29th, excuse me, September 2019, where the board voted to move the project forward to develop a 25% design submission for a public hearing. In the intervening period to the next board milestone in May 2021, there were some delays due to COVID and also the Metropolitan Planning Organization or NPO, where they changed readiness requirements for Transportation Improvement Program or TIP projects. So also in this period, Mast dot approved using Chapter 90 funds for design work on state highways. So on to May 4, 2021, the Select Board voted to continue moving the project forward using Chapter 90 state aid to supplement available funding to meet the readiness status on the Transportation Improvement Program. The town's preferred draft alternative was submitted to Mast dot using the Design Justification Workbook process in June of 2021. Mast dot did not support the proposed east-west bicycle accommodation in the town's alternative. Following up on that outcome, the project team, project team representatives met with the chief engineer to advocate for the desired town elements in December of 2021. That's set the stage for the team being able to submit a revised DJW, which was submitted in March of 2022 with enhanced rationale for supporting the town's position. Unfortunately, again, there was no change in outcome and what we're referring to is the Mast dot alternative, and we'll go over that in the next couple of slides, that represents basically their current position on the form of the project. In August of 2022, a meeting was convened by the town manager to discuss approaches and options to move forward for discussion with the Select Board, as we're doing tonight. And as a very quick refresh, and I know I have in the staff report for the project, but again, this project has its roots in the 2002 Comprehensive Plan and a 2007 Annual Town Meeting Transportation Article. The primary needs for this project include improving overall pedestrian safety. This intersection is a primary link between the Crow Road housing developments, the middle school, connecting with the Chatham Village Market CBS location. Protected crossing phases are needed to accommodate safe movements by all age cohorts of pedestrians in the vicinity. So the proposed improvements will remove barriers for safer use by affordable housing residents, students, and those with mobility issues, providing greater social equity for all users in the vicinity. So basically by removing these access barriers will be improving social equity. Additionally, sidewalk crossing improvements along Queen Anne Road will improve safety of visitors looking to get to the Unitarian Church. Fire department response improvements are needed in this intersection with the installation of an Opticon signal actuation system. This provides an all-way stop to improve public safety responses through the intersection. Handicap access is a prime motivator for this project as well. Basically, none exists right now in the intersection. So the proposed improvements will bring the proposed project up to current Americans with Disabilities Act ADA standards. Bicycle accommodation is also another factor in this proposed project where improvements to accommodate the town's on-road scenic route, basically transiting the intersection from north to south or south to north is one of the primary interests of the town's bikeway committees in improving safety of this intersection. Improvements are needed to the intersection geometry. This would improve movements of the access to Chatham Village Market CBS location and on to Crow Road by adding left turn lanes and providing clear view of signal indication from all areas of the roadway. This would also correct skewed geometry and basically all will contribute to a safer, more improved functioning intersection. The signal hardware is outdated. Upgrades are needed, as I already mentioned, to accommodate the Opticon installation and to provide protected phases for pedestrians to make crossings at the intersection. The horizontal profiles also need improvements as the visibility and function are diminished by the existing steep grades in the middle of the intersection. So transitioning to the discussion topic for this evening of finalizing the project alternative for the Mast dot 25% design hearing submission. And then in the next slides, I'm going to recap the town's preferred 25% design alternative coming out of the September 29 Select Board meeting. And I'll go through the Mast dot alternative and highlight some of the items in the meeting So in your package, there was a copy of the, basically the town's preferred 20, 25% design alternative, which was served as the basis for both two DJW submissions and kind of the highlights of the submission include the on-road bike accommodation for the north-south connection of the scenic on-road route through town. It includes removing and reconfiguring certain islands, adding pedestrian crosswalks with ADA ramps, proposed new signal systems. It also included a sidewalk from on the eastern side of Queen Anne, or I guess the northeastern side that would terminate at the easternmost proposed crosswalk. And on the western section of the intersection, bike accommodation would include, would be within existing, excuse me, within proposed travel lanes, and that would be accommodated by an 11-foot, 11-foot wide travel lane with a three-foot wide shoulder. So the second slide in the meeting package, this was included in the meeting package, and this is just really a color-formatted version of the same alternative for comparison purposes, and we can use this going forward or in the Q and A or response section as well, if it's more helpful for participants to use this version versus the black and white version. So what I'm going to do right now is I'm going to quickly transition to graphics that were included in the staff report here. And I am going to talk about the Mast dot alternative. And for this graphic, I'm going to highlight the, basically the differences in what the town had discussed in its preferred alternative and where Mast dot is, where they think the project needs to be to meet their engineering directive, which I've included in the staff report as well. I don't know if people did get a chance to look at that, but again, we have that available if we want to pull that out. This graphic also highlights some of the minimal takings that would be needed for the sidewalk improvement. So the, you know, the same basic concept is the same for the, in the town alternative as the north-south or south-to-north transiting of the intersection by the, by the bikes with a five-foot separated bike lane. So that's essentially the same. Again, the crosswalks, the ADA ramps, improved signalization, but the differences really come in the, on the western side of the intersection with a five-foot separate bike lane and an 11-foot travel lane. And on the east side, also Mast dot is looking for a shared use path to account for the use of charos, so we can, that symbol of the bike with the two chevrons over top, those are for shared accommodation on a roadway and, you know, bikes and vehicles. So what I'm going to go through here is some generated visualizations that demonstrate the extent and expanse or the parameters of the proposed Mast dot alternative. Or starting here, looking to the east into the intersection. And what I'm going to do here is what I was calling toggling, and I believe I referenced it in the staff report as well. So what I'm going to do is go back and forth for a little bit, for a few seconds on some of these graphics to, for people to get a sense of, you know, the extent or the amount of changes or, you know, how significant or insignificant they might be for different people. So again, looking to the east towards downtown, and here's the visualization of that plan view that I just reviewed, that includes the five-foot on-road bike accommodation, the 11-foot lane. It includes a sidewalk on the north side and a new sidewalk on the south side. And as you can see, as you look towards the intersection, you'll see removal of that kind of right slip lane that exists now and also proposed infrastructure for signals. And again, just want to point out, these are not signals that, or mast arms that go across the entire intersection. So again, their context sensitivity has been considered and with the ultimate goal of improving visibility and safety. So I think here the most, and here you can see the approximate property line or the limits of the state layout. And just contrasting the two, again, I think it's interesting to look at the extent of the proposed project and the, let's go on the previous prior existing conditions because the road has been repaved since the last, since these were, the photos were generated via a maintenance project where Mast dot did not make any improvements other than changing Okay, so moving on, looking to the west from down the hill towards the intersection, again, you can see the existing signals, you can make out some of the islands and conditions parallel of the curb. So here's a visualization indicating the, what I call the charon marking, so you've got some on-road accommodation for bikes here. You have a new improved sidewalk to the, on the north side of Main Street, Route 28, and you have a proposed multi-use path, avoiding trees that were raised as a concern in some of the previous discussions as a potential way to preserve those trees. And similarly to the other view, again, you can see that down in the intersection, the proposed new signal infrastructure. This is looking to the, to the north towards Main Street, Route 28 from Queen Anne Road. And the proposed items in the Mast dot alternative include the on-road bike accommodation here. So again, separate five-foot bike lane on both sides for the on-road bike path, the transit in this instance mostly from south to north. Again, depending on which side you're coming down, the addition of a sidewalk on the eastern side of Queen Anne, removal of some existing islands, and you can see proposed, the proposed So and many of the improvements here get at some of those project needs that were discussed earlier regarding geometry and horizontal alignment as well and better processing through the intersection. Looking to the south down Crow Road. We're looking at the, again, the access into and through the intersection of the scenic on-road bike path with five-foot bike lanes on both sides of the travelway, an improved rehab sidewalk. And further down, you can see the improved and small, you know, small scale, not as small as the, obviously the pedestals we have, but again, visible for safety and some reworked islands for better processing and movement through the intersection and the corresponding, some serve as refuge islands or protection for pedestrians to transit through these, and they would include ramps and tactile sections. Okay, and then the final view here is just looking down Depot and getting down the, I guess the other side of the hill, and looking to the west towards the intersection. Again, you can see the existing configurations of the islands and signal infrastructure, controller boxes. The proposed Mast dot alternative includes use of charos here, and you can see a little better the bicycle with the two chevrons, indicating that through bike travel here would be on-road and shared with vehicle travel, renovated sidewalk to the south side of the road, and again, down to the intersection, again, seeing the signal infrastructure. Switch back here. And like I said, we can pull these up again as we move through in the Q and A section. So for discussion this evening, basically two approaches are proposed. And based on the two attempts by the DJW process, the preferred option by staff is to submit the Mast dot alternative and make identified context sensitivity comments at the 25% public hearing. There's another slightly nuanced potential approach to move, slightly revised alternative that includes adding width to the sidewalks as a compromise within Mast dot's controlling criteria for on-road bicycle accommodation. So this would involve reducing the bike lane but still adding pavement to sidewalks or multi-use paths. And representatives from HSH are here can talk about that. But again, this option is not guaranteed to be accepted by Mast dot. So building on the town's previous advocacy, which if you looked at the staff report, I included a copy of a presentation that had been given to the, and which I previously referenced as well, to the chief engineer, you know, and based on our discussions that we just reconfirmed this again this morning with the police chief, you know, on his position on the, basically as we move into the public hearing process, continuing to advocate on the east-west bicycle accommodation through the intersection is something that is, you know, we're not in concurrence on that with Mast dot as a viable alternative to remove the bicycle accommodation from our presentation and perspective to the west of the intersection is due to the existing primary recreational connection between the Crow Road Center and West Chatham Center. So, you know, as shown here, the, there's the ability for that connection between those two centers exists, and it's also consistent with the bicycle master plan. So the route. So the Route 28 segment between Pearl Road and West Chatham, you know, was not identified as a desired route to make the connections between those two neighborhood centers. And on the corresponding, on the east side, again, there's also a viable alternative from our perspective to remove the bicycle accommodation east of the intersection where there is an existing on-road connection to Chatham Downtown. And with improvements in the intersection, the use of the scenic on-road route would just be improved. And again, this, you know, this assertion from, from the town's perspective is also, again, consistent with, with the town's bicycle master plan, which also, you know, the Route 28 segment between Pearl Road and the Chatham Rotary is not identified as a desired route. So in closing, as noted in the staff report, the team members or other team members are also in attendance, you know, for more technical response and questions and answers. And I can also pull up slides or the staff report attachments as needed to facilitate any questions and responses. And with that, I'll close. Thank you.
Okay, Terry, thank you very much for that and toggling back and forth with the, with the pictures before and after, if you will. So what we're about tonight is that you're looking for some direction, Jill's looking for some direction from the board, the public as well, on a submission to Mast dot for furthering the 25% design with two kind of nuanced alternatives. The one that you're recommending is identifying contact sensitivity, having a public hearing and identifying what our concerns are with respect primarily to the bike lanes, I think. Is that, is that a fair statement?
Yeah, that's a fair characterization. And again, there might be some other items that, you know, that people might identify coming up through the process as well. But those are the, you know, those are the primary items that, that we've identified, you know, at the staff level.
Can we, can we talk, can you address or can Tom or Jill address the, the cost of this project and who puts the bill, at least as it, as it sits now versus what we might want to do otherwise and who pays for what? I think it's very important to give us the proper context. Jill or, or Terry or anybody.
Sure, I'm happy to do.
Jill, please, yeah.
So right now in this phase one to get to the 25% hearing, the board has approved earmarking our Chapter 90 state aid funds in the amount of $342,000. So that is funding that's available. There's no, no budget appropriation that's needed, so that's earmarked. And then we can speak to what's been expended to date. To get to where we are tonight, phase one to get us to the 25% public hearing, we had earmarked $140,000. And that's per the budget that we worked through with HSH and, and our town staff. We've expended about $33,000 so far. So the balance of 106 or so thousand would be needed to do more robust visualizations, complete the design justification workbook process with the preferred alternative and the real heavy work that, that will begin to get us to the 25% public hearing. We didn't do all of that because, again, we're looking to the board for direction at this time. And then the project is on the transportation improvement project listing. It's also called the TIP program. Right now, that is funded for a federal fiscal year 2027 at $3,158,868. That's a combination of federal and state funds, so no town funds for that. And again, that's scheduled for fiscal year, federal fiscal year 2027. As we move through the discussion tonight about getting to the 25% public hearing, I do want to note and certainly could have weigh in from the engineers that if at any point after the 25% hearing, that's the formal submittal of the project to Mast dot, if Mast dot is, and we're not in concurrence with them, we can pull the project. Now certainly there's some expense that we would get to, but the phase one for the 25% public hearing preparation is again at 140,000 of the 342,000 that we've earmarked through the state aid funds. So if, I'm happy to keep talking or if there's any other questions.
No, that, that's helpful. We'll, we'll open it up. Mr. Matters.
Just one question off the top of my head. If we do decide to move forward with the 25% design formal public hearing, what would be the anticipated time that that would be held, I guess? Were we looking, how many months out, you know?
Yeah, that's a great question, Mr. Chair. If I can defer to Bridget Myers, she's the project manager for, from HSH, Howard Stein Hudson, if she could speak to that.
Hey, everyone, Bridget Myers. Yeah, so if we had gotten a decision to move forward, say today, for example, we would then look to advance the 25% package. So preparing the full plan set, estimate, all the environmental pavement checklist, everything that goes in functional design report, sign justification workbook, so the whole package that goes in the 25% design. And I think, you know, that could probably be advanced from now towards the end of the year, so sometime in the winter, December, January area, then Mast dot would then review it. With that fiscal year, we might be looking at a 60 or 90 day review. So once that's done, we'd have a comment resolution meeting. So once they approve the design justification workbook, as well as have the 25% utility site coordination meeting, those, those two are the big ones that need to be completed before they'll approve you for design public hearing. Assuming those could be have, you know, held, you know, in the months following that submittal, you know, we could be looking at design public hearing potentially in the spring.
So next spring.
There was a long, there was a long road to get there. There's a long road to get there.
Well, she was, she was working through the calendar and the steps in her mind, I think.
Okay, no, fair, no, fair enough. Okay, no, spring's a reasonable pocket, like, because I know we're going to be sensitive about when we might potentially hold a public hearing to get the appropriate turnout and feedback, et cetera, et cetera. We've, we've gone down this road, I hate to use the term before, so I want to make sure we, we keep all this in mind. I mean, I must make a general comment. I mean, I, I, I recognize that the road projects in Chatham could become very, very sensitive. We've received a tremendous amount of input in the past. We, I would highly expect to get more input on this project moving forward. I, I do think, I recognize there's a lot of diverse opinions on this road project. There's no two ways about that. But we have gone this far. I'm, I'm frankly going into this a week ago when after, you know, doing reading into the packet, I kind of shifted a little bit. I'm more inclined to proceed with the 25% formal public hearing to get that final input really crystal clear feelings from all of the players that are going to be involved. Because I don't think every, I don't think every property owner in this area has maybe 100% understanding of what may or may not happen to their property. So I do think we, from a procedural perspective, it's beneficial to go this long. We, this has been a while since we've been working on this. It's been a couple of years, clearly. Get this input, you know, obviously we're going to make some minor decisions tonight about which path we're kicking, kicking off towards this public hearing. But to go through the process, do the formal public hearing, bring it back to the board to see, is it, does it have enough, you know, satisfaction to the board to move it, continue it moving forward? Or does it just get put, put to bed? Because if we don't go through that motion, and I know it's queued up for FY 2027, which is the latter part of the TIP window. I understand if things get more shovel ready, we could maybe slide a little bit earlier. But there's also a point that we're going to get pushed back a little bit. And if we decide to kill it now, just for argument's sake, any future board could bring it up, back up again for discussion, but I would have to start at step one. And we'd lose, well, two years' worth of, you know, I know we interrupted with COVID and everything, but a significant amount of time to, to get to where we are. So we've gone this far. I would, I would be more inclined right now to go to the formal, 25% formal project, collect all the information, data, input from all the players, and bring it back to the board and see where we go from there. So that, those are really kind of my summarized feelings on this right now. And, you know, I'll shut up at the moment.
Thank you, Corey. Mr. Schell and Mr. Castro.
Yeah, I, I'm going to ask a couple of questions and answer them myself and then let somebody else tell me that I don't, that I'm, that I'm wrong. As I understand this, question number one is, do we have the option to kill this altogether? I think the answer to that is no for a variety of reasons, not least of which is that we have a safety factor here to consider as a town, never mind Mast dot or anybody else. So that, I just don't think that's an option. Number two question is, what advantage, if any, do we gain by, in effect, responding to the state's my way or the highway with our own my way or the highway? Sorry for that, I couldn't resist. And, and I don't see, I'm, I'm not hearing any advantage to doing that, excuse me, other than perhaps, coming back to money, I suppose it's possible that we could wait to spend 100 and whatever it is, 30,000 or the, the, whatever we have left to spend to get to the.
Buck forty.
To the, to the, to the hearing. That, that seems to me, I, I don't know whether we would spend that either way. I'll assume we wouldn't if we went back to the state and said, we, we're going to insist on our view of the world. But that potentially defers the, the whole process anyway. And at the end of the day, I think it's pretty much inevitable that we will have the discussion with the state on our way versus their way in a hearing in which they haven't capitulated before we get to that hearing. So from my perspective, save the question of the, whatever the amount of money is that we have to spend to get it ready for the hearing, I, I, I think this is something that as a practical matter, we, we accept the staff recommendation, which by the way is the experts in, in, in the picture. And as Corey said, come back and deal with it when we have all the information in front of us and we have the community in front of us.
Thank you, Michael. Corey has a follow-up.
Just a brief follow-up. I think maybe using the term, and I threw it out there for, about killing the project. I think we can all recognize amendments and changes to that intersection are warranted to some level. The question is, is, is it going to be done through the process of, of this path, which is an option? And whether we can make accommodations with Mast dot and make up, you know, certain waivers and what have you nots, you know, have all those discussions. If that is a viable way to do it, it's, it is more economical, yes. The other option, which is a whole other conversation, is if we go on, on our own, how that plays out, what kind of money is involved, what kind of timing is involved? That is a, that's another secondary level conversation. But I think the one thing we can all agree on is that intersection cannot just stay as is. It needs to be amended to some level, updates, grant for safety and everything else we're all, we're all worried about. But I don't think we're going to be putting this as we're killing the project. And I, like, I threw that term out earlier. We need to figure out a way to make the improvements to the intersection. Question is, how are we going to go, go forth doing it and who's paying for it?
Thank you, Corey. And off to Dean. And then after Dean, I'll turf it to the chief of police and the chief, the fire chief as well, Mr. Castro.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to ask first, is there a visual that shows the difference between what the state is insisting upon and what the town is thinking about proposing as an alternative? Because I think the only visual we saw was the state's proposal. Is that correct, Terry?
Terry? Yeah, so I did show, so the, in the package, the, the one with the white background is essentially the town. But I think to your question, so we've had that, you know, in various presentations, but as far as the contrasting or an overlay of those, we have not created that graphic. But the, the graphic in your package, that's in black and white, is the, the town's preferred alternative. And then the, the items in, in color in progression were the Mast dot alternative and its visualizations. And there was one graphic added that is a color version of the, the town's preferred alternative. But we had, we don't have a contrasting graphic created at this point.
So what I'm divining from this is that the only difference between what the state's insisting and what the town is proposing is, has to do with the bike lanes, east and west. Is that correct? You're frozen.
I, I see, I see Mark has his, I maybe defer to HSH on, on this one, if that's okay, through the chair, to Mark Gravolisi.
That's fine.
That's fine, Mark. But I think Dean, you're right.
Mark, you're muted. If you're talking.
Mark, you're speaking.
I'm unmuted now, but I can't seem to get my camera to work. Good evening, everyone. My name is Mark Gravolisi, principal at Howard Stein Hudson. I think my camera's coming on now.
Here it is.
Thank you. Appreciate the time this evening. Just wanted to give a little background for everyone. I'm a former Mast dot employee at District Six in the project development office. Worked, been working at Howard Stein Hudson for the last seven years. And my job was to advance projects like these through the TIP program on behalf of the state. I've seen many engineering directives be updated, improved, replaced over the years. And where we are right now with this project is that the DOT bike lanes that they are requesting on Route 28 are essentially the, the main difference between both alternatives, what the town wanted and what the DOT would like according to their new engineering directors requiring facilities on all of their roadways. Now, going towards the design public hearing, we must get a design justification workbook approved. That will set the basis for design for the project. That design justification workbook has an acronym, the DJW. Once that DJW is approved, which will only be approved with Mast dot's alternative at this time, based on the comments we have received, then we can go to a design public hearing with that. And at that time, that's when the public can comment on how much they like or dislike the addition of those bike lanes on 28. Otherwise, for the, for all intents and purposes, both of the alternatives are just about the same. That's really one of the major sticking points between getting this job approved at 25% versus not. Regarding funding, yes, right now the town is allocating design funds from their Chapter 90 program to cover the 25% design fee. It's all in good management from, you know, from your municipal officials to spend a little bit of money now to hopefully getting millions of dollars of state aid for the construction project at no cost to your town taxpayers. So that is the goal here. The goal is to obtain the, the construction funding for these much-needed safety improvements. And really, the only difference between the two plans are those bike lanes. It's our professional opinion that, you know, those bike lanes, while they don't necessarily extend up and down 28 in long directions, it's, to Mast dot's opinion, it's a start and it's something that they can work off of going forward. So that's, that's where we stand. That's our recommendation going forward. I just wanted to be clear that in order to get to the 25% hearing, we do have to move forward with the DOT's preferred plan. They've made so, they've made it very clear in their comments. And that will get the project rolling. And then you can hear public comment at that time at the DPH. If you have any additional questions, I'll be more than happy to, to take them and, and facilitate discussion in DPH.
Well, again, I don't, I don't, I don't have a visual of, I'm trying to understand what the town's alternative looks like east and west of the intersection with respect to the bike lanes versus what the state is recommending or insisting upon.
Sure, Harry, can you bring up that image we had that had the bike lanes on 28? And then just pretend they're not there, that's the difference. It'll just be wider lanes.
I, I thought there was some discussion about just a little wider sidewalk. I, I may be incorrect there, but.
Correct, it would be a little bit wide, there'd be more space to use for the sidewalk facility, but you can still get an ADA minimum sidewalk and the bike lanes in, which is Mast dot's argument is that you have the right of way, you don't have to take property and you can still fit in both facilities. So that's what they would like you to do.
So Mark, I'm going to share the, the town's design right now. So Mark, I'm gonna share the, the town's design right now, and then I can switch over to the Mastod.
Can I, why don't we just go to the Mastod and tell me what you're gonna change in that? This is really very confusing to watch this. I mean, this doesn't, right, right. While you're on Queen Anne, Main Street. I meant the photograph. I meant the
Wants the graphic of 28.
I wanna see what the street's gonna look like west and east of the intersection under the Mastod.
There it is.
Okay. So what are, what are we gonna, what are we suggesting or proposing as an alternative to this? They're putting a bike lane, and I can see that. And it looks like it's on both sides, Stu?
Correct.
Okay.
So, and Mark or Bridget can jump in here, but essentially, the, the town's alternative has a three-foot shoulder and would have a shared accommodation on the, so that marking I referred to as a sharrow would be included on both of these 11-foot travel lanes. So essentially, through the cross-section, you would gain two, two feet of, of area on, for a total of four feet through the whole cross-section, is what you would gain. And HSH can speak to, you know, that difference in proposed new impervious area when calculated is not really that significant. But essentially, if you remove, you would still have a three-foot shoulder here. This is indicating a five-foot shoulder. You make this three feet, that gives you two feet to play with here, and the same on the other side. So if you look at these red lines, which indicate the extent of the state highway layout, you would have two more feet. Again, I'm dividing it evenly. You could shift it, I guess, you know, four feet on one side to the other. But essentially, you would have four feet more of flexibility, potentially, in the, in the, the cross-section. So if you were to draw a line across the project. So again, if, if Mark or Bridget can explain that better than I, I would clearly defer to you guys.
What does the shoulder benefit? What benefit does it give us? And I'm wondering what we're fighting over here. We're still gonna have
A three-foot shoulder doesn't give you much benefit of anything. You know, if a car breaks down, at least it has five feet to pull over into a breakdown lane, or you have ability to pull over further for an emergency vehicle to get by in a bike lane. But yeah, the main difference is the five-foot bike lane you see, three feet becomes a painted shoulder in the road, and two feet goes to the sidewalk. I agree. I don't, I don't know what we're fighting over. This, this is, this is something that we should definitely accommodate and go forward with in order to continue funding for the project for you guys.
But it does remain, it is worth repeating that you have a bike lane going to nowhere under either proposal, right now.
Correct. And that's not a New York's goal.
Bike path from here to the Bourne Bridge. Well, maybe that is their goal.
Completely understand. Tom Temple and I have beat this one to death. And we understand that the DOT did some resurfacing and didn't put the bike lanes in. When they did that, I mean, that's, that's their own, you know, issue at hand. But, and it might have been a miscommunication on their part. It's their infrastructure, it's their road. You don't control over when those bike lanes will go in. But if you are advocating on behalf of a project of your own, and someone at DOT is reviewing it, probably not the same person that reviewed their own project for the resurfacing, but if someone's reviewing it and says that you have to meet these directives, that's where we're at right now.
And if you look at the extension of a bike lane eastward from the intersection, heading toward the downtown, I'm not sure of how productive that is. We, you pointed, Terry, you put up the map before that showed the preferred bike path of the town, which is the Old Colony Rail Trail going to the Cape Rail Trail. I believe the Bike Ways Committee supports that. And I did inquire, and the chief and the town manager responded to me, apparently, there's no legal prohibition about bikes riding on Main Street, except they can't go on the sidewalk. But I'm not sure it's a particularly inviting idea to have bicycles, bicyclists on Main Street itself, especially in the summertime. But I, you know, I, let me ask a financial question. If we, if we didn't want to, if we chose not to pursue the alternative, and we went along with the state's proposal, how much money would we save? Do we have a guess of that? Would it still cost 106,000? Because I think that's what we're being asked to do, is to forward the expenditure of 106,000 dollars tonight.
We are using our earmarked Chapter 98. We're going, we're, as staff, recommending to put forward the alternative that Mastod has commented on, not an additional alternative. So the sharrows of the bike lanes going west versus the, the five-foot bike lane, we're, we're proposing to go forward as is, let the comments be vetted at the public hearing, and for, my opinion, a different set of Mastod officials to review and hear exactly what our concerns are. You're absolutely right. I mean, it doesn't make any sense having bike lanes going east into downtown, per se, when we have Depot Road. I mean, it's, it's right there. We've tried to make this, this pitch of why it's not needed, but I think as HSH Mark had mentioned, I mean, they have a directive, or I guess, for lack of a better word, I mean, they want every new project to have a bike lane. So that's our issue. We have, it doesn't appear to be any conflict or tension with regards to the pedestrian improvements that we need there. It's the bike lane that we're most concerned about.
I mean, it makes sense to have some bike lane from north to south, because it's still part of the town's bike path map.
Infrastructure, yeah.
Network, yeah.
Cyclists go down to Stage Harbor Road and so forth. I guess, I'm not sure I fully grasped the, the answer, Jill. I guess what I'm asking is, if we were to say tonight, forget, forget our alternative, our suggested alternative.
Yep.
We surrender. We take the state's plan, because there's really no distinction. I can't see much of a distinction between the state's, the state's plan and the town's plan, which I think is more or less, I don't say this pejoratively, but it's DOT light. The only difference is mapping on the street west of the, west of the, of the intersection. So if we were to say, hey, we're okay with what you're planning, we're not gonna fight you anymore, then we're gonna take this. Do we still, does it still take 106,000 dollars to, I understand there's a lot of work that would have to be done, but, or is it something less? It's unfair to ask you, I guess. It should be asked of the
No, I'm fine to answer that question, because we don't have a project submitted yet. So what we're proposing is to put through the project that was reviewed through our design justification workbook, that looks at the same visualization that Terry provided, where you show, we show, that there is a bike lane on the east and west Route 28 Main Street. And then at the public hearing and through the various review processes, so it would, it's no less, it costs us no less to put forward our compromised alternative, that's essentially what it is. But there's also no guarantee that that would be presented for the 25% public hearing. They might object to it, and then we'd have, we're trying to be, you know, somewhat efficient with our funding. And as our, our opinion is, put forward the design justification workbook alternative, the one that Terry showed, the visualizations, as a project submitted, and then work through the public hearing comments. And then the board can decide. If Mastod doesn't acquiesce or agree with us, then we, we have to bring it back to the board before we move forward and expend any more funds.
Okay. Thanks. Mr. Chairman, if you'll just bear with me, because I do have some other questions here.
Yeah, I wanted to, after your comments, I wanted to get to the chief, the fire chief, and the police chief as well.
I wanted to refer back to the, the needs, Terry, that you identified. And we, I know the fire chief's gonna talk about the, the system he needs, the pedestrian safety and the handicapped access and so forth. If this were a roadway that were completely in the control of the town, would all the changes that are being proposed by the state be needed to meet ADA and needs and pedestrian safety? Or is it something less than that? I don't know. Maybe that's a question for the engineers. I don't know.
Yeah, I think that's an engineer, a question for either Tom or the engineer. And maybe Tom can speak to it on, you know, everything that he's been doing in town to, you know, improve, not improve, but to, you know, make various sidewalks in town ADA compliant.
Mr. Temple, are you there?
I am. Thank you, Mr. Chair. To answer your question, if it was something, if it was our roadway layout and we were doing the necessary improvements, we would have to bring it into compliance with the ADA and AAB requirements, which, you know, we would be doing the upgrades to meet the minimum standard, which would be the five-and-a-half-foot sidewalk for, for handicap accessibility. You know, and where you have obstructions like telephone poles and/or hydrants, we have to maintain the minimum of 36-inch clearance, minimum behind the back of those in, for the pedestrians to get through or somebody that's handicapped. So to answer your question, yes, we would be upgrading it.
There are a couple of minor takings that are shown on the plans, and would those be implicated as well?
Yes. Because we, if we weren't able to fit it into our existing right-of-way layout, we would have to make a taking. We would approach the residents and ask them that, you know, we need this liberal land to widen the sidewalk, to bring it into compliance. And we'd be, we'd be looking for that additional square footage that we need to build the sidewalks.
Okay. I'm, I'm just gonna, thank you for your, all of your answer, for answering my questions. I'm just gonna conclude my comments at the moment by saying, I was the, I was the board member who brought the motion to terminate this project back in May of 2021. It, it lost on a three-to-two vote. And I did so because I wasn't convinced, and I'm still not, it still hasn't been demonstrated to me, that there's overwhelming public support for this project. Whenever we had public input in the past, it was largely negative, I think. There was support for it. I recognize that. So I'm having a hard time wrapping my, wrapping my head around continuing with the project for an additional 100-plus thousand dollars. But at the same time, the alternatives to correcting some of the problems that are there, and I totally agree with select board member matters, that there are problems that need to be corrected, both in terms of pedestrian access and some, I think relatively minor bicycle, bicycling changes. But this is the main section, the main intersection leading into town. And I think, I think if the town is to go forward with this, and we need, we need to be satisfied, if the board wants to go forward with this, we need to be satisfied that there is sufficient public support for it in order to avail ourselves of the funding. I'd rather, I'd rather tap into state funding to correct these problems than pay for it on our own. The only way we could pay for it on our, on our own is if we got state permission to, I guess, undertake the access permit process, or if we did what they did up in the town of Barnstable that Mr. Levitt has proposed in the past, which is to take over this stretch of, of Route 28 and make it a town road. But that involves significant liability issues and so forth. So I'm gonna listen to what others have to say, and then I'll make up my mind if there's a motion on the table as to how I vote later on. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Castro. And I would like to call on the chief of, the fire chief. David, you on there?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, David. Please, just weigh, just weigh in. I know you've been very vocal about the Omicron system, but just please weigh in on the, the approach from Depot and that system itself and safety concerns that you have. Thank you, David. You're going, you're going, you're going in and out, David.
I'm sorry. I'm actually, this is great. What I can Can you hear me?
Yes, we can now. No, we can't.
Okay, I'm sorry. I just got out of the tunnel.
Yeah.
The timing was terrible.
Yeah.
My, my concerns are coming down Depot Road with our apparatus. We can't see, you know, all directions. The Opticon system will really make that so much safer for us. And, you know, my take on this is, I'd really like to see the project move forward, because I know what happens. We're gonna say, let's table this, then we're gonna fight with Mastod on trying to do our own project. It's gonna take forever to get through, and it'll go past 2027. And I'd like to see the, the project move forward.
Okay. All right. Any questions for Dave? Mr. Schell?
Yeah, you mentioned about coming down Croll Road. When, when you're heading toward West Chatham and/or South Chatham, do you come down Depot Road, or do you go around and down Croll?
No, we, we come down Depot Road.
And so even, I'm sorry, please, go ahead.
And with the Opticon system, we, we control the lights.
Right.
You know, predetermined how the lights are gonna work as soon as our signal hits them.
And, but, but the one thing, you will still have to cross over into the oncoming lane as you go through the, the, the intersection. Is that correct?
Yes. But that's, that's not where the issue is for us now.
No, I understand. I, I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Okay. David, anything else?
Nope, not unless somebody else has a question.
Any more questions for Dave? Okay. I'd like to have Chief Anderson comment on the project and his perspective as chief of police on safety issues in that intersection, and who lives nearby, et cetera. Thanks. Welcome, Mike.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We also would like to see the project go through, but we do have some concerns. And our positions are, number one, we support the fire department, and any type of equipment that's installed to control the traffic lights is a significant improvement. Terry, if, if you could put the overview, the color overview slide up, please? Our position is, is really pedestrian and bicyclist safety. We've done analysis on crash data that, that shows oddly enough that this is a fairly safe intersection. We, I think we had 250, 260 motor vehicle crashes in, in 2021, zero in this intersection. And we've had two so far this year, and they've been non-injury related. They've been one property damage major and property damage minor. What the police department sees here is, on Croll Road, where it's in pink, there is an existing bike lane. It's posted, there's signage. On Queen Anne, at the bottom, there is an existing bike path. It's posted, there's signage. Just off the screen is where the Old Colony Rail Trail ends, just at the end of Hitching Post, just at the end of Depot. We can live with the introduction of bike traffic west of the intersection. Our issue, my issue, quite frankly, is the, the encouragement of these bicyclists to continue east up what we refer to as Beers's Hill towards Chatham Ford. Again, that's, our opinion is, we would like that section of bike path to be removed. And I think that we can solve that problem, is if we divert that bike traffic to Depot.
Depot.
You highlight Depot. You, you press Depot, because quite frankly, the, the bike path ends at the top of Depot. The sidewalks and the crosswalks will improve. With the new traffic lights would be new traffic boxes for pedestrian crossing, where you can hit the button and it would say, stop, don't walk, walk. That would increase the pedestrian and bicyclist safety. No problems with that, no issues with that. Just, again, our, our concerns right now is the, the promotion and introduction of that bike traffic east of the intersection.
Okay. Questions for Chief Anderson? Comments or questions? Mr. Castro, and then I've got a couple.
Thanks, thanks, chief. Can I just ask a question? Has that been considered by the team? With what the chief, the modification the chief just made, is there likelihood that we could amend our alternative to pursue that?
I have to defer to Terry or Bridget on this.
Or, or Mark?
Yeah, I mean, I'll start, and then if Bridget or Mark want to jump in. But, you know, essentially But, you know, essentially, that's what we were advocating for, is to remove that from the, you know, from the consideration with our illustration of the non-concurrence with the town's bike plan, again, of not encouraging bike travel in those two-mentioned directions.
The chief is suggesting that you substitute for non-encouragement, you substitute for encouragement eastward going up Depot Road, I was just wondering if that wrinkle could be included in the plan going forward?
Yeah, I'd have to defer to HSH on that, if there's some signage or some other opportunities to do that further than, you know, as it moves into more of the 25% design package.
Bridget or Mark, would that be an impediment for MassDOT, please?
What's in it, yes, it would be impediment to change the plan and take the bike lanes out, right? We don't want to encourage people to use the bike lanes. So what we would do is sign, you know, the appropriate bike path through the intersection. The town can put on their website, on their bike network, you know, where bikers should go. And what you're gonna end up with in order to meet engineering directives at MassDOT are two glorified shoulders that really don't have much use on Route 28. And I don't think that, you know, we would encourage the use of that, and like I said, the signage through the intersection would say, to get to the town center, use this route, not ride up Route 28. So that's certainly something we could do to allay those concerns and make sure that we're not encouraging the use of those, especially when there's a lower-stress network.
What you're proposing is a share, I'm totally focused now, eastward of the intersection. You're proposing a sharos, is that what you're proposing, as an alternative to what the state is insisting on?
So east of the intersection, we had proposed, unlike the MassDOT alternative, the, it does have sharos, but it was the path that would go behind the trees.
That's a shared path with pedestrians?
Right, so, like Mark said, yes, we can use signage to direct bikes how we want them to go. We would still have to, the thing with the shared-use path is it covers pedestrians and bikes, and you will need some sort of pedestrian accommodation over there regardless. So essentially, it would be like a wide sidewalk, and it would at least kind of check their box for providing somewhere for bikes to go in the event that, you know, they end up there or they need to go, you know, let's say to the post office for some reason. But it wouldn't have the, it's not the same treatment as we had on the west side where the actual bike lanes marked on the street. So it's slightly different on the east side.
But you're not thinking that you could introduce something new on Depot Road as an alternative for bikes, as the chief was suggesting?
It's pretty narrow, we are already, we are adding one sidewalk there, and I think there's, you know, a driveway to a house that's pretty close to the road. We hadn't looked at adding additional, because that's one, ironically, that's the one road we don't necessarily have to because it's a local road designation. So we hadn't looked at widening that for any sort of bike accommodations, but we could certainly look at that as, you know, as an option.
Because it's a town road, we can put whatever signage we want up there?
Yeah, the classification of the road is local versus like a culture or arterial, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Bridget, that's helpful, and thank you, Mark, as well, for your input. Before I turn it to the public, Chief Anderson, any other comments? I think that's a good comment about going up Depot versus, you know, having folks' bicycles straight into town, yeah, and that's your primary concern.
Yes, sir.
But I think the project, you know, I had some ambivalence about this project, you know, kind of longstanding ambivalence about it, but I'm more intrigued by it now. I think it does a better job in terms of rationalizing the intersection itself. I think having better lights there and better pedestrian commands, if you will, or better pedestrian, you know, access and egress, it improves it markedly, I think.
Our concern for the traffic lights and the crosswalks, our needs have been met.
Sightlines are improved, the sightlines there at times, especially when you're coming down Queen Anne Road and you have that intersection, and hit that intersection, it's an odd angle. I think this does a better job rationalizing the angles. Certainly want to get the system for the fire chief, the fire department, in place so that they control the lights, we should do that anyway. I think from a financial perspective, I'm pretty much in favor of, you know, getting to the 25% design phase, paying the $106,000, having that public hearing. To leave $3.2 million on the table in terms of state money to improve the intersection for our citizens and for safety, I think, would not be a wise decision. So I would be in favor of continuing to improve or continuing to pursue the pursuit of the 25% MassDOT hearing, and getting to that hearing, then having them weigh in. Now, we would be accepting bike lanes on Route 28, but also accepting, the way I hear it, the way I hear the reality of it, is that we'd be accepting bike lanes to nowhere on Route 28 for 3.2 mil. Can we live with that? And as long as we get our improvements in safety along with it, so. I know there's been comments about how, you know, you're paving, you know, making a highway into town, et cetera. I think the approaches, at least on the graphics that I've seen, the approaches still make the town look very attractive going up the hill, and as you approach that intersection, it still looks very attractive to me. I like, I had a question about finances. If we were to go it alone, we'd have to pay for takings alone. Are the takings included in the 3.2 million in the MassDOT budget, if you will?
Yes, MassDOT does cover the takings.
Yeah, I think that's important as well. And, you know, I do want to remind folks that, you know, we may not have had, and I said this before when we discussed this project, we may not have had, you know, traffic accidents. We had a fatality with a pedestrian walking across the road, right, one of our fellow Unitarian congregants died in daylight, got hit by a car in daylight and died. At that intersection, and it was, it's, to me, that's one of the main reasons why I am in favor of promote improvements here, because somebody died there.
And if I could just add, on the data that I've provided to Terry and Elaine, that does not show up on the data, only because the way our tracking system, that location falls outside the footprint, the geo footprint of that intersection.
But the intersection itself invites the kind of speed and that...
Currently, yes.
Yeah, whatever. Those are my thoughts, Mr. Shell, and then we'll turn it to the public, and I have hands up virtually as well.
Yeah, I just want to add a couple of comments here. First of all, I think, I mean, I agree with everything you just said, Mr. Chairman. I think it's important to understand what we have to decide today. And what we have to decide today is whether we want to, in effect, introduce design amendments, if you will, to the state's position today or defer that until down the road. And I think the, when you consider the potential for delay that the fire chief articulated very well, I think, for me, anyway, that's an easy question. Let's do that down the road. My second point is, and I may be wrong about this, but my understanding is that the $106,000 that we're talking about is money that's coming to us from the state. Am I wrong about that?
You're correct, we have it through our state aid, our chapter 90.
So, right, exactly. So, I mean, we're not exactly, I mean, we're spending taxpayers' money, but it's not as if it's Chatham taxpayers' money, except as, to the extent they are obviously Massachusetts taxpayers. And then the third thing, I mean, I appreciate the chief's comments about not inviting or encouraging people to ride their bikes, essentially from that intersection up toward the main rotary in town, but my personal experience is that bicycle riders here tend to ride their bikes wherever they want to, and, I mean, at night, you have to be so bloody careful on Main Street between West Chatham and Croll Road, and, you know, indeed, I often wonder, why are bicycle riders not on the bike path who are between West Chatham and Main Chatham? I don't have an answer for that, but, you know, I don't think it's the fact that we don't have signs on Depot Road that encourage them to go up Depot Road as opposed to, so I think that's a very important consideration that we ought to be looking at, but not nearly powerful enough to defer what we ought to be doing today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shell. Okay, comments from the public, either here physically and/or Ms. Gibbs? And then recognize Mr. Messina, who has his hand up virtually.
Thank you, Elaine Gibbs. I wasn't sure what the scope of the conversation or the decisions were going to be made tonight, but I do believe there is an alternative three, even though it's been addressed, and clearly this is not where the board's going, and that is to end it. This has been going on for a number of years now, and the 25% design was contingent upon, as you said, getting waivers from MassDOT. Waivers are allowed for the environmental scenic aesthetic and preservation impact on historic communities, and if Chatham doesn't qualify for that, I don't know what does. The problem with MassDOT is that they have complete streets. It is one-size-fits-all, they don't care where it's going, and they ultimately will do what they want to do. And this isn't just about the bike lanes. Somehow this conversation, suddenly, it's as if that's the only issue with this design. I believe that people have a lot more issues with this design than just the bike lanes. I also have a problem with, I understand that people will ride bikes anywhere, but for us to actually tell them to ride it there seems to me to be scary. I've seen families, you know, on some of these bike paths in areas that they shouldn't be on, five, you know, parents with three kids, and they think if it says bike lane, they're gonna be safe, and then they find out it ends. And for MassDOT, you said, well, it's a start. Well, what happens in the interim before they continue that down through, you know, all the way down to West Chatham? I also wanted to mention that, Terry, could you put up the intersection picture again? What we've lost sight of is the magnitude of this project. I had to reinvent the wheel and go back over the years, but that intersection is currently about, the rectangle today is about 3,000 square feet, 3,200. That is gonna turn into 6,000 square feet, and that's because every single one of those artery roads is going to be increased considerably. Right now, the lanes coming from the west are about 35 feet, it's gonna go to 55 with pavement, and the same going into town. The one that's a real, gonna be a real doozy is Queen Anne Road. That thing is gonna spread out like this because they're getting rid of that turning lane that we used to have, you know, the breakdown lane. It's gonna be a massive, massive intersection. And what you didn't see, and nobody took pictures of, is looking down Queen Anne Road from the intersection, what's gonna happen there to those trees? One of the things that we had asked was that for the 25%, we wanted to have the property staked out so that the public could see it. They could drive by, they could see the flags, they could see what trees are going, they could see how wide the roadways were gonna be and how much green space was gonna be lost. They said they would do that at 25%. So if you move forward, I would hope you make that a contingency that we have to see. These aren't good enough, these are not to scale, you cannot begin to tell from this how massive this project is gonna be. And I won't go into a lot of detail, I think Chief Anderson has said it best, I had asked for an update, I had provided them to you last time, and there have been zero accidents. No pedestrians since 2009 have ever been hit. So to say that this particular intersection is a problem is not, they were all driver error, they were either failure yield or a red light violation. And I recognize that there was an accident in 2008, much further down, at the crosswalk going over to the church, but it was at dusk, and there was no streetlight, and it was dark, and there was no speeding, and it was a horrible, horrible tragedy, but it did not have anything to do with this intersection that we're talking about. The last traffic counts that have been done by HSH were back in 2014, and 10,000 cars passed through that intersection in a 24-hour period. I used only half that number of 5,000, and that means 1.8 million people passed through that intersection in a year. Over the last two years, there have only been two minor accidents with almost 2 million cars. That's 1 in 1 million chance of a minor accident there, and I did not know this, but the possibility of being struck by lightning in your lifetime is 1 in 15,000. So I would say this is a safe intersection. The problem is, once we got on the tip list years ago, we got taken off of MassDOT's maintenance list, and that's why some of the pictures look awful. The lights are rusted, there are curbs that are broken, and there is work to be done, there's no question about it, but they have not maintained it. So I would say that those are the issues. I think all that's needed is to replace the lights, paint the crosswalks, put in the new electronics that would help the police and fire, fix the crumbling curbs and pavement, and install new traffic lights. And if MassDOT won't do it, I would suggest to Chatham, consider taking over the intersection. It's a small area. Mr. Nacastro, you were very eloquent at the last board meeting about the increase in daily seasonal visitors entering Chatham in the summer and the impact on our infrastructure and environment, and our continued encouragement to attract more visitors. Most of our capital projects that we are involved in, and major changes to every aspect of Chatham, has been to accommodate them, and this is a really good example. There is no problem nine out of 12 months of the year. In the age of environmental concerns, how can we possibly justify the loss of so much green space, which I think we will all see once it's staked out, and cutting down beautiful trees replaced by asphalt, hundreds of signs, telephone poles with mast arms and graffiti on the roads? While some may say it works, I don't think anyone can say that the West Chatham corridor is beautiful and representative of Chatham, and we're gonna do it again. I think it's long overdue that we change our thinking, visitors need to accommodate Chatham, and what we're trying to preserve, the historic integrity, beauty, and natural environment that brought these people here in the first place. And nor should full-time residents have to go through this construction again, which will be huge. It is huge because five roads are impacted, because there will be summer moratoriums, and we will deal with it. I think the disruption will be enormous, I think we've been through quite enough, I think it's time to stop and revisit what we want Chatham to be in the future. Chatham is becoming unrecognizable, in my view, and once this project is done, you can land a Pilatus here. There's no turning back, and they may just do it. Because seriously, you can see it from, the planes can see it, they think it's the landing strip for Logan. So I would hope that we reconsider, a lot of telephone poles are gonna have to be moved. That green space on the lawn is gonna get cut way, way back, and I want to see what trees are gonna be lost and how much green space. Thank you very much for your time.
Elaine, thank you very much for your time. No hyperbole there. We have Mark, and then Mr. Frank Messina would like to call on, Mr. Messina.
Hi, how you doing?
Yep, good.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your giving time. I think Yogi Berra said something about deja vu, here we go again. This sounds like West Chatham, and the comment that the public is not for this, I think, is not valid. I think the same people who were against the West Chatham improvement, the rotaries, are the same people gonna come out against this and any changes to traffic improvement. So I, you know, this board had the courage in the past to move forward with the West Chatham, and I would hope that you realize that this is something that will improve the quality of life, not only for the people in Chatham, but also for the people who use our road. And I think you've got a good compromise here. I think the comments from the chief, the police chief, relative to the Depot Road diversion is kind of interesting. Let me talk about biking a second. I'm a biker, maybe 81 years old, but I still bike. And guess what? There's two kinds of biking, there's recreational biking, and I hate to call it, call it commercial biking. As Mr. Shell alluded, to the number of bicycles on... on the road from South Chatham, from Harwich coming into Chatham, all the way, you know, to CBI, West Side, all the people who work and don't have cars, the summer people, they use Route 28. They don't use the bike path. They don't use the bike path at night. I'll tell you why, because it's not lit. Okay? So they use, they use 28, and it's dangerous. The state, when they did the West Chatham Rotary, they added a bike lane. They added a five or 10-foot road. And now the, the Bike Committee is now going to be connecting the West Chatham Rotary to the bike path. And that's the next thing that's going to happen, and that's being done with State Bike Ways Fund. So biking's important to Chatham. You know, not everybody gets in a car. And in fact, the previous speaker talked about environment. I mean, we kind of encourage people to get on bicycles. And, and I think this, this goes a long way. I kind of shudder at the comment, you know, bike path to nowhere. There's no such thing as a bike path to nowhere. If you give somebody, you know, a couple hundred yards of a safe bike access, that's fine. And then he can, he can move. I would hope the state in some future time is going to be putting a bike path all along 28, just as they did in West Chatham, and just as they're, they're doing in other areas. This road is, is a commercial road. It's used not only by, by vehicles, but also by bicyclists. And, you know, we in this country have kind of looked the other way with biking, unlike Europe. And I think it's time we recognize that biking as a means of transportation is, is, is part of, part of what we have to do. So again, I would encourage you to move forward. Looks like we have a compromise here. And remember the concept that a lot of people are against it. I don't think that holds true. I think a lot of people like to talk about it, but not enough that you should not move forward and help improve this, I consider, a very crazy intersection. It may not have been any people dying lately, but it doesn't mean that it is a safe intersection. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Frank. And then Mark Gravellis has his hand up as well. Mark?
Thanks. Just a couple of other points of interest before we sign off for the night. Route 28 is state-owned. We've established that, and the rest of the project is local, local jurisdiction. And yes, you are, you, the collective town, are putting together dollars to get to 25% design. I do want to point out that if you, if you don't go with the state's proposed plan and adhere to their comments, you will not be available to use state-designed funds after 25% design. I'm not promising that the state will pick up the design for you to get to 25% if we have a successful, successful public hearing. But that is what they did on previous projects in the Cape when there was a mixture of state jurisdiction and local jurisdiction. So if there is consensus to go ahead and move forward with the project, you are opening yourself up available to not only get construction funds, but design funds. There's a potential for that. And then second, just to Ms. Gibbs' comments about what her preferred scope of work would be, I wish it were that simple. I wish that you guys could get an access permit and just, just do the signals. But what you see in front of you is just doing the signals. It does trigger all of this work, further design directives. And if you were to get a permit, you'd still have to follow through with it. And the, you know, the only way around not doing that would be taking over the road in the intersection, which she suggests, which I don't really recommend, and I think was mentioned is not a viable option either. But we are just doing the signals, and it triggers all the ADA work and all the sidewalk work and all of the bike requirements. And that is, that's why the, the project is where it's at. Thank you.
Okay. No, thank you, Mark. John?
John Hogan, South Chatham. Yeah, I know it's getting late, so that's why I just really get a quickly a couple of notes here and so on. Obviously, I don't get down to Chatham very often and so on, but I'll have to say, from my point of view, that's probably the worst intersection in Chatham at this point. And I'm coming at it from obviously a slightly different point of view in that I have the experience of driving on the Cape during the summer and in Clearwater, Florida during the winter, where two, two-lane roads are basically, you know, nothing. It's four lanes, six lanes, traffic lights, everything. So, you know, I'm coming at it from a little slightly different perspective. And, and I would just start off with saying that I definitely think that OptiCom system is definitely needed because if FDW needs to come down to South Chatham, I want them to get there as quickly as they can and to be able to come down Depot Street without having a problem. I think that's definitely necessary. Regarding the bike lane going, using Depot Road going uphill, I think that certainly is a viable alternative because you're only basically saying, you know, that little piece. You can get to anything you need if you came up Depot, and then you maybe use cost through the, through the post office and so on. You get to the post office. And I'm not sure. It's been ages since I used a bike, but I'm thinking that maybe that is even a slightly less slope. It might be easier to get up on a bike than on 28 itself at that point. The, as, as, as a previous speaker mentioned, yeah, I think the bike trail definitely, you know, is definitely too dark at night, you know? That's why I think some of the people are riding a 28 because at least you get a little bit of light from the headlights and so on. It's, it's maybe not perfect, but at least it's probably better than the bike trail. So the lights, to me, as I mentioned maybe once before, one of these, I don't get very often, but the, the traffic lights that are there are definitely, to me, confusing when you're coming up from Crowl, because you're like, which light applies to this to me? Because you can see the other one going from, to the other one. So it's like, which, which one do I, do I pay attention to? So that definitely, I think, needs to be corrected. I also believe, yeah, definitely, you know, we've run this before. I think those left turn lanes are needed. I've had a situation just this week and so on. It was like, you know, I needed, wanted to get by, and there was somebody there who was sort of blocking, they were hogging the whole intersection. If there would have been a left turn lane for them to be over and out of the way, I could have gotten past it. The signals that are there, yeah, I'm not sure what they're from, if they're from the 50s or whatever, but they're definitely obsolete. I think that the ones I saw in the, in the pictures here look to be, you know, they're not the sort of big city, just plain steel pipes. They're at least, look to be a more decorative, which I think is similar to the ones up by Stop &amp; Shop in East Harwich. And I think, you know, yeah, they are somewhat big city, but they're not as big city-looking as the other ones. So I think those look pretty good. The question I had was, there was, I looked at the packet, you know, online, there was something about a path going by the church, going behind the trees. And that was what I was a little confused about. I didn't see that anywhere tonight in the, these presentations, but there was something showing a path sort of behind the trees.
It did go behind the trees, John. Yes, it's in the picture. You got to look at it carefully, but it's in the picture.
Okay, okay, okay. So, all right, thank you. And I would conclude by just saying that, you know, for instance, as far as the safety, just because there hasn't been any wrecks doesn't necessarily make it safe. We're trying to avoid problems. So, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, John, for your input. Appreciate it. Yes. Is that Ian?
Yeah.
Hopefully, we can keep this to like three minutes, Ian?
Well, some people get to speak twice. I keep that in mind.
So let's keep it under five minutes. Ms. Gibbs went seven and a half minutes.
I wasn't allowed to speak until very end.
You are allowed to speak, but I'm also allowed to tell you-
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
What kind of limit we have?
Ann Thompson, Chatham. Tonight, I speak for many who are opposed to a major urban reconstruction plan at the intersection of Crowl Road. Some of the multitude of objections are as follows. Number one, the proposed overhead lighting would not withstand the first severe hurricane or winter storm with high winds. Yes, everybody supports the OptiCom, and maybe it makes sense to figure out some way where we pay for it instead of having to go through the entire state project. Curbing, number two, curbing on both sides of roadways intersecting at the lowest water level plane, especially as proposed on the hill leading into downtown, will cause constant roadway stormwater flooding at the main intersection of five roads. During heavy rain, snow, or snowmelt, this would cause a traffic nightmare. Take, for example, the curbing along Oyster Pond Beach and Queen Anne Road that has consistently caused a flooding of the intersection of those two roads during rainstorms. Roadway drainage is only into underground cisterns, and they are matted with dead leaves and debris and fill up in one hour. Originally, roadways had grass edging, and stormwater and runoff could flow out of the road and into adjacent lawns and shrubs on either side. High curbing has forever presented a new problem of stormwater flooding in this town on the streets. The proposed plan for Crowl intersection would create a constant need for maintenance and pumping of water. And as the axis of these five roads is at the lowest point, where else are you going to pump it to find a lower point to get pipe it, pipe it out of the middle of the axis where all the roads come together? There's another sort of low valley area right across from the entrance, side entrance to the Unit Church and the entrance to Chatham Village Market. So there would also be a flood area there caused by new sidewalks and high curbing. Having attended many Bike Committee meetings in the past, I have learned that the Master Bike Plan created and presented to the group by the Cape Cod Commission would cost the taxpayers $6 million, and that was a pre-COVID estimate. Having talked to many cyclists, I have learned that they consider cycling next to raised curbs as both very dangerous and hazardous. Creating bike lanes next to, next to raised curbed sidewalks is the worst possible design for cyclists. In an emergency, the curb prevents a fast exit and instead leaves them more vulnerable than without a curb. The proposed design for Depot Road is presented as a safety improvement for rescue and fire vehicles. In fact, applying a sidewalk with raised curbs will do the opposite, as it will make high-speed exits even less possible, as rescue drivers will have to slow down for pedestrians and cyclists, and they will not be able to drive up on off-road shoulders to bypass cars or road bikers. In several California towns, it was shown that complete streets with bike lanes and sidewalks actually slowed down rescue and fire vehicles to a dangerously slower response time. They also could not drive around lined up traffic as sides of streets were taken up by pedestrians on sidewalks and cyclists in bike lanes. This leads into the federal promotion of complete streets. It is one size fits all, as Elaine already mentioned, computer, a computer-driven plan to focus on and appease urban cyclists and pedestrians. This plan allows for eight feet of combined sidewalk and bike lane and does not include width of curbing and grass berms. Chatham is a rural centuries-old community with very narrow roadways and houses and public buildings set close to the road. The antique charm of our local roads and noteworthy antique architectural streetscapes stands in the way of Cape Cod Commission's promotion of complete streets, which includes widening of roads and an urbanization of our town with massive sidewalks and bike lanes and hundreds of signs that they require. When Jeff Colby headed DBW, he clearly stated that MassDOT makes exceptions to regulation sidewalk widths in Chapter 90 funding for rural roadways that are characteristically narrower than in urban and suburban, suburban settings. I am sure that is still true. Six, years ago, a wonderful off-road bike trail was designed as a secure and safe way for tourists and residents to enjoy the sport while viewing scenic vistas all through the Cape from Falmouth to Provincetown. It successfully took all the danger out of cycling. Ironically, the new Master Bike Plan, at great expense to we the taxpayers, does the opposite. It brings the often unskilled biker back on the vehicle transport system, exposing them and their families to narrow and familiar roads, high raised curbing, and most of all, summer traffic. Please consider the merits of our well-used rail trail and bring our visiting cyclists back into an historically successful, well-designed off-road sport. These are just a few of the reasons for halting any further costs in time, design, and engineering and planning towards redefining our classic entrance way to Chatham downtown. Thank you.
Thank you, Ian. I see Gloria has her hand up. Gloria?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Gloria Freeman. I, I wonder how many times MassDOT has to tell Chatham that we must play by their rules or they're taking their money and going home. I wonder how much money we must spend to again try to convince them that Chatham wants to protect and preserve its integrity and community character. MassDOT should tell us before we spend more money if the context sensitivity accommodations will ever be granted. If the answer is no, it's no. We also heard that this is not a high-crash or accident area, and we have seen in the past the accident statistics to prove it. The intersection needs improvements, but not at the cost of our sense of place and sense of pride. MassDOT does not buy into designing with Chatham's character in mind. Coastal village or highly populated town, it's all the same for them. Complete streets. The part of the iconic green lawn at the Unitarian Meeting House is in the way of a complete street. So double the roadway and lose green space and the historic streetscape. The designs we've been seeing are incompatible with Chatham's long history to protect its special identity, an identity which has great appeal to visitors from all over the world. I hope you will consider the third approach and vote to go in a different direction. Chapter 90 funds have been set aside, so why not use them for needed safety issues, needed safety issues, repairs, and maintenance? Community character is disappearing, and our vigilance at such an architecturally and historical site is important. Thank you, Chairperson Dykens, and members of the board.
Thank you, Gloria, for your comments. Appreciate it. I see no other hands up either here or online. I do have, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
Jeff Fugelstein at Select, Stage Harbor. Selectman, I beg your indulgence for a few comments. As I've listened to the various self-interest groups present tonight, and there are various self-interest groups who have their own agenda, I don't see a conclusion that, that brings us to what I call, keep it simple. If it ain't broke, don't fix it. Now, one thing I did hear from the chief was that the, it needs an intersection adjustment, meaning sidewalks, safe walks, et cetera. What I heard from the fire chief was that it needs control of lights coming down from the fire station. I've been there on many occasions where a rescue truck or a fire truck has come down that street, and with the sirens going, with the lights going, traffic stops and lets everybody through. I don't think there's anybody in this room that has seen anything different. I would wonder if there are any other safety concerns, major safety concerns. I have one that I'd like to bring up with regard to a safety concern that could occur, and that is, whenever you widen a street, whenever you make it flatter, whenever you make it visually more easier to drive through, you have problems. If you widen that street coming into town, you're going to have people trying to round about cars because they're impatient and they want to get where they're going. I'm sure you've seen this in the past. I also wonder if the widened vistas take away that beautiful intersection. I think there's a way to solve the problems at the intersection without going the MassDOT route. I also saw on one of the photographs, bike lanes possibly coming down- I also saw on one of the photographs, bike lanes possibly coming down Crowell Road into the center of the intersection. There is a bike lane which crosses and goes past Chatham Boat Company up the hill. You can take a right, go past the fire station and into town, and it doesn't, traffic does not have to be directed downtown or down to the shopping center and that area. It's very dangerous. There is a sidewalk on the left-hand side of the street where people could go up to that cross section and cross and go through, go past or through town, past the fire station. I don't know if there are any other concerns. Chief, do you have any other safety concerns that I didn't mention besides crosswalks? So let's keep it simple. Let's not broke what's not, let's not fix what's not broken. I remember one selectman previously said something about, we're looking for a problem when we have supposed solutions. There are several solutions here, but there's no real problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Anybody else here? I'm sorry, I didn't see you before, Jeff. Anybody online? I would like to read, Shereen Davis did weigh in with me, having studied and had a conversation, having studied the package and had a conversation with Jill. I concur with the staff's recommendation to go forward with the proposal to submit the MassDOT alternative and make identified context-sensitive comments at the 25% public hearing. So, Shereen is in favor of the recommendation by staff. She also says, I see my and I hope our priorities as follows, keep this low-cost, small design-driven project addressing fire emergency movement through the intersection with handicap access and overall pedestrian safety. So, Shereen weighed in and I think Mr. Nacastro, then Mr. Shell. Mr. Nacastro has his hand up, and then Mr. Shell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to make a few comments and then indicate which way I'm going to come down on this. We have for several years heard concerns about this project from members of the Finance Committee, who didn't like its size and its cost. I also fear that in proceeding with this, the town might be bringing on future years of community argument and dissension as we saw in West Chatham. I'm also not sure that it's worth challenging DOT on the bicycle lanes issue, because as we saw, there really isn't much difference in the result. For me, however, I'm very moved by what the fire chief and the police chief have to say, and public safety is for me paramount. I think the comments of the two chiefs tip the scale for me. I would like to vote no on this project because I fear what it's going to turn into. At the same time, we don't have the luxury of being able to correct those problems that do exist there because it's not our road, and it's an extremely complicated process and an expensive one to try to take over that stretch of, a portion of Route 28. I do take some comfort in the fact that there will be a public hearing, and we'll have a real opportunity to assess the measure of public support or public opposition for this project at that public hearing. And I hope that whatever that is, that the Select Board pay attention to it. The Select Board did not pay attention to the opposition to the West Chatham project that was voted at town meeting. I'm not saying I disagree with the result in West Chatham, because I've been on this board for seven-plus years, I think I'm in my eighth year, and whenever there was an opportunity to kill that project, I did not vote to kill it, I voted to continue with Because I was not interested in overturning the views, the position that had been taken by the previous board of Selectmen. And I think the project, I think the result does work very well, and so I'm okay with it. But I do think how it was, how it came about was unnecessarily complicated and unnecessarily divisive. Having said all of that, I'm going to support going forward with this tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Nacastro. Mr. Shell?
So with due respect and appreciation for particularly the comments that Mr. Nacastro just made, and also the comments that we've heard from all of the people that have made comments and submitted positions tonight, I want to move that the board direct the town manager to move the project forward to a 25% design submission for the MassDOT public hearing, taking the approach in item number one that was recommended as the preferred option of the staff. And I can read that if need be, but I think it was in the materials, I don't think it's necessary.
And a second?
I'll say.
Mr. Nacastro, seconds. Fine. Any further discussion by the Select Board? Mr. Metters?
No, I think most of us on the board have gone through one of these big road projects before, and I don't think we're saying we're endorsing this 100%. I think we're endorsing the fact that we need to go through a formal public hearing process and be very clear what's being put on the table. And it's a difficult position to be put in right now. We've had a really, West Chatham was no picnic. There's a lot of, there's still a lot of strong opinions one way or another on this. And with all due respect to our previous speaker, I do think there's going to be a lot of strong opinions, pro and con, on Crowell Road. So, let's have the formal review process, let's put all the facts on the table, go through the process, and see where it leads. But that's, from a mechanical point of view, I will support moving forward with the project at the time being.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and we'll take a vote. Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Mr. Shell?
Aye.
Mr. Nacastro?
Aye.
And the chair says aye as well. Thank you very much. Okay. On to committee appointments, Cultural Council and Open Space Committee. We have an opening on the Cultural Council, we interviewed Ian Wade. We have a vacancy to June 30th, '24, and two vacancies to June 30th, '23. I'll turn to Mr. Metters.
Mr. Chairman, move to appoint Ann Wade to the Cultural Council to June 30th, 2024, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed.
Second.
Okay, vote. Mr. Nacastro?
Aye.
Mr. Shell?
Aye.
Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Chair says aye. We have an opening on the Open Space Committee, we interviewed Frank Scherer on September 20th. I'll take a nominee, please, Mr. Shell?
I move to appoint Frank Scherer Jr. as an alternate to the Open Space Committee until June 30, 2023. Sorry.
Did you want him as an alternate or a regular member?
Oh, I'm sorry. I... No, he's the only candidate.
I think...
No, I understand. Let me amend, I...
Please, go ahead.
I move to appoint Frank Scherer Jr. to the Open Space Committee until June 30, 2025, or unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed.
There you go. Mr. Nacastro?
I'll second that.
Mr. Nacastro?
Aye.
Mr. Shell?
Aye.
Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Chair says aye as well. Thank you very much. Okay, on to Town Manager's Report, Jill Goldsmith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I understand the late hour, so I did want to point out just some of the years of anniversary and longevity from many of our dedicated employees, and the report that was in your packet will be published online as well. William Glover, Bill Glover, has been a police sergeant for 41 years, and primarily with the town, actually in the town, so that's really quite an achievement, especially for a police officer, and his dedication and energy is just there every day, so it's, I just wanted to report that. You already have Chief Dave Di Pasquale has announced his retirement, he's 33 years in the month of September, and Kevin Moore, a longstanding firefighter for 28 years, and the rest of the listing is here, so I just wanted to note that. And I also wanted to note that Tom Temple, our DPW Director, has announced his retirement. He's popped out of the meeting, but he has 39 years of public service, six years with the town of Chatham, and he's really done a remarkable job with our projects, doing items, doing projects in-house, best practices, engineering and snow removals, so I wanted to congratulate him. His last day is expected to be on December 8th. And moving forward with the Florence Selden, I guess I'm moving along a little bit more, Family Preschool Support Program, we're having a really great turnout, we have five providers with 19 students, and so that's really exciting. Four-year-olds as of August 31st are eligible for $5,000 paid directly to the provider, and for five-year-olds as of August 31st, they're eligible for $10,000 for the family paid directly to the childcare providers. And so Sean has done a really great job connecting us with the childcare providers. So happy to answer any other questions in the report, and again, we'll post it online.
That's a great report on the Selden Preschool Support Program. That's great news, great news. Any questions for Jill and comments? We always say this is a great report, and it is, it's posted online, it's a wonderful compendium of information about the town and all sorts of town departments, so it's really, really a valuable tool. Okay, that's a wrap. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Nacastro?
Aye.
Mr. Shell?
Aye.
Mr. Metters?
Aye.
And Mr. Dykens says aye as well. Good night, Chatham.